All on him.
Yeah, I got it. Jim's here, Chris is here.
Nathan.
He didn't get on yet?
Yeah.
Mr. Clemens is on.
We've got Clemens, what about Ruth? Oh, Chris?
Ruth.
Ruth's not here. Then Ruth said she wasn't. Ruth said she wasn't gonna be here.
Nathan probably got me in line.
Nathan's on his way, okay.
I thought I said he was turning.
I don't know. That's her Chris can hear, Chris can hear us?
Yes.
Alright, we've done a lot of work on this today, we're hoping this runs smoother than the last one.
I can hear very well.
Alright, good.
The other night, it was very hard to hear, I was driving and it was hard for me to hear. I, if you ask me something and you think my not answering was a yes, it probably wasn't really.
I got my creamer and sugar. That's all.
Did you bring us some coffee, Jim?
Huh? I was making milk and they said, get over there. They're on. Yeah, I got, I got, I got one, two, three, four bosses here.
Is Linda on there? Did Linda show up just?
Yeah, this YouTube, I got it.
How'd that start over? Alright, am I alright to start the meeting? Alright, Chris, Chris kinda monitor us on the sound and make sure you get to hear it, hear it.
Sounds good.
We've got, can't, we've got microphones at each table and we got the camera moving back and forth. Alright, we'll open this, call this meeting to order. And we'll open it with prayer, if you'll bow your heads, we'll. That's a blessing. Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless this meeting and bless each and every individual here. We strive to work together and do the best that we can for the city of Carden. We ask you to be with the ones that are in this town that maybe are sick, Heavenly Father, and have lost loved ones. We ask you to comfort them and heal them and be with them in their time of bereavement. Heavenly Father, we lift up our troops throughout this country, throughout this world. Standing for our freedom, Heavenly Father, and we ask you to guide, guard, and protect each and every soldier in their duties and we ask you to bless their families as their loved ones are away. Be with our late country's leaders, Heavenly Father, and help them look for the right answers, Heavenly Father, to help and benefit all peoples. We ask you to guide us again through this meeting and bless each and every one and let us hear these things we're asking in Jesus' name. Amen. And we'll stand and do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated, thank you.
Present.
James Clemens? Roll call.
Yeah, I'm here.
Alright, good. Drinking coffee too.
Here.
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 He can't hear.
He said here.
Alright, he said here, you might not be able to hear Charlene.
It's hard to hear Charlene, but I could make it out. I was the only one left, so it had to be me.
Had to be you, that's right, okay. Alright, I wanted to mention that we, we've got this written over the office, but I will get together with these people. We have one board member here, Robert Santana, Jeremy Suggs, lives over on Clark Street. He's another enforcement board for appeals. For our new ordinance that's coming into effect and it's gonna start Monday. And Gary Gibson agreed to serve and he's kind of a man that's experienced with all kind of boards. So Gary is a good guy to have on the board and a good leader to help you guys. So we'll set up pretty soon a meeting and get all three of you together to set up what we have to have, I think you gotta have rules of order and set up some officers. And I'll have to swear you in to your position. But we did ask Robert to come here to meet some of you guys, cause I hadn't met him before either. I've probably seen you at the dollar store and we sure appreciate, show him on the camera there. Smile. Okay, alright, did they put him up there? Alright, good deal. Alrighty. So, next order of business will be our regular minutes from August. The only thing I saw on there is we had inverted two quotes in the, on the second page, new business and that's all. Just put the quotes under the wrong contractor. And we got, you know, a couple more quotes after that. And I contacted, for your information, the Vasquez and they might possibly get here next week for this one, so it's kind of fortunate for us. And I'm gonna say mine, he assured me they'd be here next week, so.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with the changes.
It's been a motion to accept the minutes with the changes.
I second it.
Seconded by David Heron. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Did you hear that, James? Can you hear me, James? Have we got him muted?
He's muted himself.
Oh, he muted himself, fucking. I just wanna make sure he's, you know, he hears all that. Does that sound alright, Chris?
Yeah, it sounded fine.
Okay. Chris said it sounded fine, I didn't hear James, okay.
Yeah, I hit a button.
Okay, he was new.
Wrong one.
He was drinking coffee, that's what he was doing. No, we haven't got them, we'll do them all in next month, two, we'll have two sets of minutes in October.
Your regular minutes? I mean, the bills?
Yeah. I didn't have.
Okay.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rhonda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay. Alrighty. Now, it's the second reading of the ordinance, of our tax ordinance for levying taxes for the and also the special avalorium tax for the year 2020. First, we'll do ordinance 2020.04. Let me find it. Second reading, this is concerned with the special avalorium tax that, you know, goes to the sewer. City of Carden ordinance number 2020.04. An ordinance of the city of Carden, Kentucky, providing for levying, collection, and time of payment of a special avalorium tax for the year, for the 2020 tax year. Whereas KRS 65125 authorized the city of Carden to levy and collect a special avalorium tax on the fair market value of all lands, improvements, personal property, tangible and intangible, held or owned by any person, firm, company, corporation, or association in his, her, theirs, or its name, or as a fiduciary or agent and subject to taxation on the laws of the state of Kentucky, including all properties and franchise heretofore and hereinafter assessed by the city council, railroad commission, state tax commission, state board of evaluation and assessment. Whereas KRS 65.125 further authorizes the use of the revenues for such specified purpose has shall be identified by the legislative body of the Carden City Council, I'm sorry, let's quit there. Now therefore be ordained by the city council of city of Carden, Kentucky, Commonwealth of Kentucky, that one a special avalorium tax of .85 cents on each $100 worth of property is hereby levy for 2019, I suppose it's 2020 I got. We did that the other day, I picked up an older thing, okay. Tax year become due, come due on receipt of tax bill. Let me make sure I don't have 2020 anywhere else, or 2019, okay. This second reading of our special avalorium tax.
I'll make a motion to.
Rhonda made the motion, Karen seconding. And we do a roll call vote on our ordinance, I'll call them, Charlene, I think. Rhonda Smith?
Yes.
James Clement? James Clement?
He said yes.
Yes.
I didn't see, okay. Ruth Brooks absent, Karen Curl?
Yes.
Nathan Grace?
Yes.
David Heron?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, our second ordinance is for the regular property tax, it's gonna be at .088. The regular compensating rate is what we chose. If we had chose for a 4% increase, it would have been .091. City of Carden ordinance number 2020.05. An ordinance of the city of Carden, Kentucky, providing for the levy and collection of avalorium taxes for the 2020 tax year. Whereas KRS 92.280 authorizes the city of Carden to levy and collect tax on real and personal property. And whereas KRS 92.280 further authorizes the use of revenues for such purposes as shall be provided by the legislative body of the city of Carden. And whereas KRS 132.285 authorizes the city to adopt the Henderson County assessment for all real and personal property situated within the city as the basis of all avalorium tax levies ordered by the city council. Whereas the avalorium tax shall be on the fair market value of all lands, improvements, personal property, tangible and intangible, held or owned by any person, firm, company, corporation, or association in his, her, theirs, or its name, or as a fiduciary or agent and subject to the taxation on the laws of the state of Kentucky, including all property except the property covered by section three of this ordinance and the franchise heretofore and hereinafter assessed by the city council, railroad commission, state tax commission, state board of evaluation and assessment are hereby levied and directed to be collected for the year 2020. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of Carden, Kentucky, Commonwealth. And I think that's it. Believe I've read enough. Karen made the motion to accept second reading. Seconded by Nathan, oh, give it to David, okay, seconded by David, Heron. We'll do roll call vote again, Rhonda Smith?
Yes.
James Clement? I'm watching.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ruth Brooks absent, Karen Curl?
Yes.
Nathan Grace?
Yes.
David Heron?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was gonna talk about, I think our next order of business, talk about this COVID-19 hardship grant application. If you got, you've got copies of them, there's quite a bit of information that has to be filled out by individuals in order to get it. Then they have to be, you know, then they have to meet the, all these qualifications in order to be acceptable. Now, I haven't got this all clear in my head how it's done, you know what I mean? And we, we send it in and apply to the GLG, I think this, this document will go in and then it'll be approved and that money will be sent to the city and that, like our cares money, that's what it seems like.
But it's based on them meeting this criteria.
They have to meet all the criteria in this, it's not.
Criteria.
It's pretty well cut and dry, it ain't, I don't feel like it's a decision we have to make which one is qualified.
Right.
They have to qualify, if they qualify on that, I don't think it matters, you know, as far, what I'm saying is I think it'll all get funded. And I'm not 100% sure, other than we can allow this, you know, document to go, in fact, we have mailed a couple out on some high, like five and six monthers, just to let them see if they want to fill it out. Offered it to them, told them there was no guarantee of any.
How many responses did you get back?
Well, there's only two that we sent out, I don't think, we got, how many we get back, one? Oh, we got two back, alright, sent out two, got two back, filled out. So now we got to get them, find out how to process, you know, it'd be a I don't know what to say, it's kind of, it's come up pretty quick, I guess.
Well, I was.
About two, we had them a week or two weeks? Yeah, a week, and so it just jumped out at us and all of a sudden, we don't, you know.
We all mailed them out before council.
So, well, we mailed these out because they don't, we told them they don't, they are not, they don't know if it's gonna be approved or not, we let them go ahead and tell them out, these two people were real high on months.
How many people were we talking?
Tonight, we're talking twenty.
Ninety-one light notices today.
We're talking twenty-two that are late, late, cutoff, late, past cutoff.
Like muds.
That's like, well, we're going two months, three months, four months, five months. Now, the light ones that we sent out, that's for, well, they're late after two months, so.
Mayor, if I, if I might.
That's a big number. Go ahead, Chris.
So, I talked to Charlene a little bit about this a couple weeks ago, I guess, and then I've looked at it.
Turn him up.
Sorry, can you hear me?
I hear you, it's just not loud enough.
Um, okay.
Okay.
The, I don't, I don't know that I quite under, have a full grasp on it either, yet. When I've read what the, this all came from the Kentucky League of Cities. And the way I read it is, is that it's something that, it's a suggestion they made of something the city could create to you, to try to use, cause each city was allocated a certain amount of cares funds. But you only get what you actually use, right? You'll submit for reimbursement for all your expenses. So this is something that you could create, I don't know if it's administered by anybody other than you and I don't know, I sent out a listserv request to the lawyers, the municipal lawyers listserv that KLC has. And I didn't, I did that this morning and I haven't received any feedback, I asked if anybody else was considering doing this, if anybody's cities were doing it. And I didn't, I haven't gotten anything.
Okay.
So, but each city is allotted a certain amount of cares money.
Yeah.
But we've used the carpet, we've used quite a bit of the cares money we were allotted.
We're allotted fifty.
So, so, most, most cities aren't gonna use all theirs, I mean, you know, if you haven't had cares expenses, you just haven't. I know that some cities that have a lot of money allocated just don't have a lot of expenses. Others do, so this is a suggestion by the KLC as to how you could get more of the cares money. You know, it's gonna go to pay delinquent sewer bills, but on one hand, I kinda wonder about the people who've been paying their bills and aren't gonna get the benefit of it.
Sure.
But it does get your bill paid, but I think it's, I don't know that any, I don't know if anybody else is administering it or if they're suggesting you create it, I just don't have a lot of answers about how it's gonna operate, so.
Thank you for that, cause I, you know, I'm nervous about it, the fact that if we have to establish a grant fund and that puts us into administering.
Yeah.
Deciding which one qualifies.
Right.
I don't like that.
I say no.
But we got Team Kentucky following up that we can put this in every sewer bill and they can, you know, it's for all utilities.
I think we need to table it till we find more information.
And we won't quit looking, we'll try to get this filled out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's families out there that could use this help. That are just trying and can't make ends meet, and I get that, but if we're allotted so much cares money, we're not gonna be able to dip into like muds, can't even take care of it, I'm sure.
In my opinion, if cares money is, cares money is a limit, then, you know, 50,000 is a limit here. But we gotta, you know, we gotta send in qualified expenses, which we're gonna do, I don't know, we haven't added the carpet in there. Where was we, do you remember how much cares money we had spent? Thousand, and since we were talking to, now we can add eight, eighty-five.
Then we were talking about a laptop and a can.
Yeah, that's, we're gonna talk about that tonight, so that's gonna be added to it. So there's a lot of money left on the table, but do, is this, is this the route we wanna go?
I mean, wouldn't this expense here that we've done?
Yeah, that's part, that's what's added up to the thousand, what we've done. And we've got, we're talking about maybe getting some more. There, I found some cheap ones for, to set it in front of each table for as long as we need to carry on with this. Or if we can put them up and use them, you know, when the flu season starts, we'd love to have another one, just, you know, flu will be worse than COVID, so, anyway. You know, we can put one on, one in front of each council person, when we start letting people back in, have shields for you all. Yeah, I thought about that, you know, we haven't ordered anything, but they weren't.
Like shields like that?
A little better, they'll stand up, no, they'll stand up.
Like that, when you go vote, then little things.
Yeah, just like, and they're pretty, I think there's like 28 bucks a piece or something like that, they wouldn't be expensive. We'd have to buy six of them.
My only thing is, like, of the ninety-one she sent out, how many are really struggling and can't pay it and how many are not gonna pay it because they know they don't have to?
Well, in most cases, in most cases, I'd say there's a lot of them that ain't paying because they don't have to.
And why, I mean.
What do you do?
Well, I mean, if, if somebody is attempting to pay.
Nobody, yeah.
If they were attempting, then I'd say, hey, let's bend over backwards, let's try to help.
Yeah, help.
But they're not offering nothing, so, and you know they got money to run up down the road.
Well, actually, you know, Charlene and I've talked about it, she's, you know, we've, we've mentioned it. When the, when the cutoff time comes, just cut off, because we've offered letters, come in and make arrangements to make payments, that has not been done. So when it gets down to cutoff, I'm inclined to agree with the rest, if you all agree. When that date starts, that's the day to cutoff, you know, and start cutoff right then. When you cut the water off, that usually makes a little difference. I mean, we've got some that are five, some are five and six months, you know, and, and then some are running the gambit, staying at two, you know, and, I mean, I'm not saying it's, some of it is by necessity, I'm satisfied it is, but all of it ain't, this ninety people is like, that's a new high for me, since I've been. We got ninety delinquent.
Two seventy-three.
Oh, two hundred and sixty-nine or seventy-three, somewhere around there.
It's like thirty-some percent.
You say ninety-nine or?
Ninety-one.
We were running in the ten, fifteen percent range, I think.
Are you gonna run out of that?
No, but.
We looked at it.
We looked at it earlier.
Anyway, I wouldn't put that out, you know, let you look at it. Actually, I had, I had one that I would have definitely let you look at that was, just had that numbers, you know, not names, I just don't want names going around by chance. But we're gonna, you know, it's something we're gonna have to deal with and I don't know, you know, yeah. Yeah. And we know that, we've got regulars, very, quite a few regulars, we don't have ninety of them, I can assure you that, we've got, we've got
Right.
About twenty, there's about twenty of them, at least twenty.
I'm just saying on this, we don't have enough information to make a decision.
And I won't disagree with that, that's, we haven't had this long enough and the people we're talking to don't know any more than we do about it.
I'm gonna make a motion that we table it till we find out some more.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll get, I'll see if I can find more information.
I'll second.
Okay. We've talked to Jesse, but she keeps saying do it, you know, Jesse Howard. And it's mainly, you know, it's mainly a push to get all the cares money you can get.
Right.
That's well and good, but I mean, I want us to justify what we're getting is cares.
Right. I suppose what you would do is, when you submit for your final, you know, you're gonna submit for reimbursement, right? And you're gonna, you would, if you did this, you would include anybody you approved those amounts, and if it got approved and you got the money, then you would apply it to their bills and I guess it would be good. And if you didn't get it, the money, if they said, well, we're not gonna pay for that, then they wouldn't get it, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't get it.
Yeah.
Maybe we can figure out how to make it work to get that money, but we just, I think we need more information.
I agree with you 100% and hopefully we'll have it before the next meeting, we'll do our best to push, try to find out what this means. Now, this Team Kentucky is, you know, there's an application here to fill out and that's a, that's a way online, online. It's not done through here, we could send people this. I think it's got the website on this front page.
But this they do theirself.
This they do theirself, they can do it online and they can apply and, and, you know, it's also if you wanna donate. If you wanted to donate to Team Kentucky, you can do that through the same organization, or same system. And I don't have a problem with just folding Team Kentucky up with the website on it, putting it in the sewer bill and send it to, you know, they may, they may be paying our sewer bill. Trouble with electric, I don't know.
It ain't no better than it was last time. No, it ain't.
I don't know. Still drinking coffee? Alrighty. Alright, motion to table. Rhonda seconded, Karen made it. All in favor of tabling this COVID? Until we got more information, okay? Opposed? Alrighty. Now, next order of business, we've, I've kinda talked to a few of you about that, we thought maybe, we're using a lot of David's equipment and I would like, first of all, we owe him a lot, he spent all afternoon here today getting this tuned up to where the sound is matching and getting out on Zoom and I appreciate his work as an IT man. And he's, he's the best we got and he's all we got on top of that, so. But anyway, he worked very hard on it, but anyway, I think we probably need a laptop in here and get a camera like that where we won't be using his equipment. And those are, I'm amazed that those work fine, they were already here.
Yeah.
Yeah, they belong to the city. So it kinda needs to be used, probably worked out, you know, a little bit, but.
Probably the last time was Happy Days.
It could have been.
So we use yours.
I always remember. I always remember unloading David's, I didn't know it was cities, I didn't know.
So we need a camera and a laptop.
That's what I would like to have.
Because this is Corona related.
It will go on the cares.
So.
Now, laptop, here's what I think, he's got some ideas about getting some prices on it, we'll try to get this moving, but. I was going to call Tom over here at Grad or kind of IT and see if he has a group of, if he has a place that he buys them at a.
Right.
Rate, if that's worthwhile. Linda was looking like Dale, we saw a Dale for like seven hundred dollars, and that's what we have, you know what I mean, so I, I'm not. That's what she has, let me rephrase it, I don't have a, I don't have a dog in the race on a computer or anything else myself, and, and don't need to even touch them hardly. But anyway, if you guys, I, I, I wanted you all to know this and see, make sure, I think everyone I've talked to has kind of agreed, but I haven't seen Nathan to talk to. So, we're thinking about having this equipment here, we could utilize the laptop on this third desk over here as a, you know, extra computer, maybe, I'm not sure, we got, we might have to. We're going to have to get another server, and I don't know if that laptop would count as a server or not, and that's for that. May pay, uh, pay PayPal business, you know, paying the.
Made about another license for another computer, but I don't know about another, you don't need a server.
Well, this is for the office.
It's for that, where they can come in here.
Where they can pay online, but yeah, bill pay, and they got to keep it away from the, keep it away from our computers and, you know, pay on a separate computer. For lack of a better word.
Just.
Y'all talked.
The sewer bill.
Yeah, just for the, that's the only thing that we, well, we take taxes, I mean, this thing will take sewer bill and taxes.
But it's city of Oregon, it's not like in Kentucky you can tell.
No, 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 it's none of that, no, it's only that, in fact, you know, it's paid through that, and then we check it to see, you know, what's been paid, and. The money, when they do it, goes straight into the account and not through the office, so.
Get us some quotes.
Okay, alright, we'll do that, and if it needs to be a hurry, I'll call you ahead of time if we got good quotes, and if it's a whole bunch of close ones. The camera, we figured, is there about a thousand dollars in all that rig on the camera?
About like six hundred right there.
Six hundred, okay.
Tripod and encoder and everything right, right there.
So can the camera be mounted, so when you just hang it and leave it stationary?
Yeah, I'll probably mount it somewhere above the door there, so we can swing around and get everything.
Probably used to be mounted right there where that big hole is, I guess.
That had little big square.
Yeah.
Yeah. One of those security cameras, didn't it, okay.
So how much do you think for a laptop?
I'm just, rather than him calling all of us, why don't we just put a limit?
Yeah.
And then if he goes over that limit, then he can call us. I'm going to make a motion to give Ted the spending limit of three thousand, and if you go over that, then you call each individual.
I definitely ain't going over that, so.
So I figured three thousand dollars ought to get you a laptop and a camera set up.
Yeah. The COVID, this, uh. I don't know where to put it.
The assistance, COVID assistance program.
The possible grant, hardship grant. COVID, yeah. We've got to find out more about it, Ruth, because, you know.
It makes it look like, it potentially looks like that we are the ones providing the grant to the customer without any, where are the funds coming from?
Yeah, yeah, because we don't actually have the funds, if it don't come from.
Right.
Cares, we're not, you know, we, we're.
It's like a, almost like a template that you create.
Yeah. I didn't like the idea of us running a grant thing, you know, I didn't like that, if all we had to do was accept those applications, send them into DLG and they be approved. Or not approved, that suited me, and then they send the money for whichever one's passed the grade, you know, I. That's the way I think it should be done, but that's not, that's not the way it reads, so, does that, does that help answer your root? Okay. And we're going to follow up, we've tabled it, we're going, Chris is going to investigate, and we're going to keep trying to get answers that, you know, hopefully get the answers we want, I guess, for lack of a better word, get what we want.
If the cares money is going to take care of it, y'all be willing to do it?
Yeah, but we're just trying to find out how.
We won't be allowed to say anything.
Right, make sure the ca, yeah, that's more likely, if the cares money, we'll do that, you know, there's a whole lot of people with ideas about this. That are talking, that may not know what they're talking about, and I'm one of them, I guess, so I trust the legal, I trust our legal eagle guy here, Chris, he'll figure it all out for me. I wanted to add something to Public Works that I don't have on here.
You don't finish my motion.
Oh.
I'll make a second.
Oh, shoot, far, I'm sorry, thank you, pardon me, I'm out, mayor's out of order here, uh, have a motion on the floor. Of a limit of three thousand dollars for a camera and a laptop, from Karen, and a second from Rhonda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, sorry, thank you, I've been bad to get out of this.
Well, that's why maybe we can have a full next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be nice.
Turn all his stuff up here.
I'm going to call Tom, because that's the part I don't know about us bringing something outside in, but you know what I mean, in the grad system, so.
We'll have to have somebody wire that up there. Mount it and all that good jazz.
I don't know.
I could, I can do it.
You can do it.
Well, what, uh. All of that comes together, right, we're going to get it just like that.
Except for the tripod.
And I agree, the tripod may be handy, but if we ever wanted to use it somewhere else, you know, we can't take it.
I mean.
We can get that, well, yeah, but we'll have it mounted up there, and I won't want to take it down.
I start saying, do it, but release on it, just like it snaps off that tripod.
Alright.
Yeah, my security camera's outside, you just screw them in, take them and charge them and screw them back in.
Really?
Real easy.
Okay.
When do they go dip?
At night.
About three minutes out of the batteries.
Alright, uh, what I was going to mention is we finally got around to doing this concrete entrance back here behind City Hall, and we're going to have to do it. It has, we're taking it up, more of it cracked than I intended, so it went from twenty foot to about twenty-six. We had to take a little more asphalt out than we planned. And because it's on a slope, I'm concerned about pouring it all at one time, we don't, you know, with this three of us, uh, you know, I, I don't, I don't want a chance, chance of it running downhill, so we're going to do a section. And then do the next section where it hold, and I don't want that to happen. We got, we got wings on it, so, and then we're going to put signs up for the heavy trucks like the garbage truck and the semis and wreckers not to come through there, because they've been. They're the reason for the problem back there anyway. So, uh, we'll be ordering some signs for that, you know, no semis, heavy trucks through that, through that ramp, they can just have to come off of here and drive through Rick's lot, and. I guess Rick's antirr log, but they, they got to get to his dumpster somehow, but hopefully we can stop it, I don't know if we can or not. I've got those signs at our church, and I've seen many a semi turn around and high-tailed out there before I could get to them, so I know what happens. Alright, now, other business, we'll go there, and then we can go to whatever, anything else. The donations have been received for the scoreboard, in fact, twenty-eight hundred dollars worth. The scoreboard, initial price for the scoreboard is twenty-three, twenty-six fifty. I think I'm telling you right. So that's going to pay for the scoreboard and the, the sponsor panel, which I can actually show you a picture of that, if I haven't already. Then I intend to, I've already kind of put the word out, intend to contact Greg Alvey down here about them mounting him, that'll probably be their donation toward the scoreboard. And hopefully that extra money is left for us wiring it up, is my intent. Wrong thing, as usual. There you go, maybe. And I thought, oh, there you go.
Yeah, I saw it.
Oh, you did?
David, didn't you say?
I seen it, yeah, I seen it.
Looks nice.
All I remember is scoreboards when I was a kid.
You had to write them with chalk.
We wrote them with chalk and.
A dirt.
Actually, chisel and. See, a chisel and a hammer, no, had a guy hanging, hanging numbers over, we did have that down there. I don't think I ever used it though, I believe, uh, they did it back in the baseball days, that's the way it was done, sure enough. Alright, that's all I have on the agenda, any questions?
Yes, I've got one thing, we had talked about updating and making some changes to our handbook.
Okay, and that was Chris who's working on that.
Where, where do we stand on that?
I don't know, I forgot about it, so. Is Chris froze, or we run out of time?
He's muted.
You're muted, Chris.
He's talking, but he's muted.
You're talking, but nobody hears you.
I can't unmute him.
Hello, Chris, we can't hear you.
There you go.
Can you hear me? I didn't say anything important anyway. No, I need to, so, I mean, we've had the handbook generally reviewed recently, and they only came up with a couple of things, and I think we, we're going to, I don't know that we've incorporated those couple of things yet. Um, Rhonda, I don't know if you're thinking of something more than that?
It was the clocking in and out, uh, cell phone policy.
Right, okay, so I've got that on my list, and so we'll, I need to get some, I need, I'll have that for you next meeting, I have some ideas on that.
And we need to, say, I've looked at some cell phone policies, which, you know, other than just flat, not use them, we turn around and have stuff here where we need them to email. And text, you know, or text y'all from their phone, or I usually do it from mine.
But they email from their computers.
Well, I don't, I don't know if we.
Yeah, they should email. Yeah, they should be.
Email from their computer, but they may text you from their phone, you know, so I've required some phone use from them. Just easier, simpler, me, me computing, don't jive. So anyway, we do need to get that kind of ironed out, you know, and the clocking in and out, we have, I think, we're following those rules, the main rules is clock out when you leave and clock in when you get back.
Right.
And, you know, still. We get it spelled out in there the way it says, and where the council wants it, and then we'll. Well, I think handbook might, I don't know if it addresses that or not, but. Yeah.
We'll go through it, I, uh.
I have forgot about it, I ain't going to lie about that.
The other thing that we talked about a couple of meetings ago was the. We, we need an ordinance that establishes the pay scales.
Yes.
Okay? So Charlene was able to find the existing ordinances, and they go back a ways, and so we need to come up with an ordinance that establishes. What the pay scale or range is for each position. And so, I don't, I, I don't know how you guys want to come up with those numbers, but, you know, we need to get some, uh, for each position.
Average is really high, you know, it's way above what we pay, that's for sure.
Well, most places you have a starting scale, and like you get, uh. A percentage anywhere from one to three percent, the, you know, we would set it for the year based on our budget, and that's based on, uh, good evaluations.
Right.
And I know that like at work, Bridget does it every year, every year, he goes on and sees what the national. Rate, the raises is, but we're on a one to five percent.
Right.
We could set, you know, we find these, I mean, shoot, I've seen the, the workout, of course, it's got. Bucus of jobs on there that we don't even have.
Right.
But, uh, you know, the, the salaries are higher than what we pay.
Larger cities.
Right.
It's based on the medium income.
But all you need is, each year, we need to do an ordinance that just, it's really only the positions that you have. And what those, uh, pay would be, and it can be a range, but it's basically establishing what the pay is.
Beginning and the end type thing, okay.
And then we go from, we can go from there year to year, if you want to raise them, three percent, two percent, five percent, whatever, we can raise them.
In my history, it was always a budget time, I would recommend a one percent, two percent raise, that is, but that wasn't per this ordinance here, so.
And then I think at the same time, you would do a separate ordinance that established those pay scales each year with the budget, that's, that's what I, that's when I look at it, that's what it seems like it.
Okay.
What it looks to me, you should be.
Cost of living increase at a year or something in that same ordinance, I'm not.
I'm sorry?
Would that, would a cost of living increase be penciled into that ordinance you're talking about?
But what we do is, each year, you would redo the ordinance, and it, and you would incorporate whatever increase you were giving.
That's where it would go.
Into those numbers, and so, and that's the way, and Indiana does the same thing, you have a salary ordinance and a budget, and the salary ordinance establishes the pay for the next year.
Okay.
So I think you do it in connection with the budget, but if we wanted to get one in place, we just need to know. What each position is and what, what the current pay is, so that we can go ahead and get it established, and then we can go each year, we can change it as we need to.
Hey, Chris, the, the real purpose is to have it in place if someone leaves and you have to rehire a position.
Right, yeah, the, then the purpose is, is that the council has authorized. That level of pay for those positions, and yeah, you're right, I mean, the one that I saw from years ago had, you know, for each position had like eleven levels of compensation, I guess, however many years they've been there. I don't know if you need to go into that amount of detail, but. You know, a range of compensation, and then somebody new comes in, you just got to stick them within that, and all it is, is the council has authorized that pay. It's required by statute, just never done it.
Range, yeah, okay.
Thirteen years or something like that.
I've looked at that immediately, and I haven't, you know, followed up, but I see that, and then we, what we're calling is, from now on, it'd be every year, it'd be a salary.
Yeah, it's called a personnel, I forget the exact name, I have a file on it in the office.
I have done myself, which, that would be better to have a, if you decide, you know, if we decide one or two percent, then we incorporate that in the budget after, that ordinance would come first, right, become before the budget.
Yeah, it takes out the nepotism and the other things.
Certainly.
It basically lets you, applicants know where they could fall in a range if they're interested in applying for.
Okay, that, that'll help, and I can see the need of that.
And what about evaluations, how, when do you do evaluations?
I do them, I do them little or nothing if I can help it. I haven't done too many, have a, uh, they have done one, so, you know, they need to be done yearly for. Get one of y'all to do them, they're, uh, me, making me fool with it sometimes, hard to do, but. Yeah, we have.
A lot of, uh.
So.
A lot of government, a lot of municipalities have gotten away from merit-based raises and evaluations to more across-the-board type of things, a lot of that's driven by. Budget constraints and other things, and, and, um, just in the government setting, sometimes you don't see so much of the. You know, giving, uh, different raises on performance, but, but that's not to say you can't do that.
Yeah. I'm more into the across-the-board type thing on the, myself, but. Acceptable to any ideas. Now, while we're talking about evaluations, have y'all ever read them? Any of them that we do, do we bring them out to the county, or is that, that's employee, that's privacy?
Yeah.
Have to be in closed session?
We've done it before.
Oh, have you? Okay, I, I just asking, because I hadn't.
Yeah.
Fooled with it, I've only done probably one or two, so, in my career. We're going way back.
We ought to have it set where you do it a certain time of the year. You know, like, maybe. We could have to do it before the budget. Right, before budget, I mean, do it like.
Do it in spring.
May.
Yeah, April, May, somewhere around there. Usually, we're fighting the budget by then still, but anyway, I see, I, alright. Yeah, April, May, somewhere in there. Usually we're fighting the budget by then still. But anyway, I see, I, alright, Chris, we'll go ahead and work on that. And we'll get, Charlie, make notes of this on the employee manual and the, the, uh, salary ordinance, so we don't forget this. Now, anything else? Karen's leaning. Look at her.
The only thing I have to say is you people do not realize how much Jack Horton goes for the city on his own time. The day my hot water, it's my fault, it's my daughter's fault. The day my hot water heater blew, I called City Hall and Charlene was kind enough to get Jack on the phone. And Jack was at my house immediately. Of course, Charlene's over here on the phone trying to tell me what to do. I'm like, I can't get the valve to shut off. So she calls Jack for me. Jack comes over. He's already off work. Then we have the water leak in the yard. Jack comes over immediately. He stayed there for what? An hour or so? On his, on his own time. He doesn't come in and clock in to do this for citizens. And I'm not the only one.
He's, and it may be, and I don't want to, I don't want to put that down because I agree with you a hundred percent, but he is a very good neighbor.
Yes.
Even if he is across town, he's still a neighbor when, where he lives. So.
Well, maybe we need to give him a good neighbor award.
Yeah.
Well, we need to do something, I'm telling you.
Give him a plaque.
He's a very good employee. I have to, I have to say that. Okay, I like that.
What street?
Okay. Car and way, Jack Horton way. That sounds very good. I agree with you though. He's willing to help everybody, you know, he jumps and he don't turn anybody away. So good guy. And he's looking, everything he looks at and does is for the betterment of the city. You know, we hear most of the complaints is, you know, maybe the trash and the tall grass and stuff. And we try, you know, we try to keep that down.
And that's one reason why I wanted to bring it up. I mean, and Randy, he was right there too, you know? So, which Randy had already gotten off work, you know, presumably at home, but Jack was a lot closer.
Yeah, they usually work, I mean, they, they work from like seven till six thirty till eleven or twelve. Sometimes they might go over, then they'll cut short the next day if they get into mowing. And Randy kind of really likes mowing. So when he gets on the ballpark, he loves steak. Then, then he's still sour the next day.
But they do a lot that, that.
Actually, I haven't been, because they're kind of like temporary. They're temporary workers. Uh, that's the way I'm treating them. Jack is part-time and Randy is temporary. What is that? But anyway, that, you know, they're not into the raised category. And then actually that would mess me up. All I do is lose hours here because they can only make so much a week.
Well, maybe for their hard work, maybe we can buy them lunch one day.
Oh, that's, yeah, I can do that.
Lunch one day. Show a little appreciation.
I mean, we normally get the grapes and the complaints about our maintenance, but we do have good maintenance guys.
I haven't heard any complaints about it.
That, well, I have a few, but they weren't like, it was, I could stand on a few of them.
Yeah. Well, the former, you know, old history was some valid, but not on these two. Uh, very well, very well. She's, uh, she's learning and, uh, she's on vacation. I know that sounds bad, but the vacation was set before I hired her and I knew that. So, you know, she, uh. No. Well, yeah, ten thousand, didn't you say 10,000? That's what I give her. Okay. No, that didn't happen.
So why don't we buy lunch one day?
Yeah, that's fine.
You can go get it. I'll go get it.
Yeah. I'm usually here, so I, I have.
I'm not, so I'll just.
We'll charge it to you. And you ain't here. Yeah, yeah, we can do that. I'll, uh. Yeah, yeah, that would be good. Okay. Alright.
Cause we just got four of them. So I mean, it's not going to be that much.
Pick a day during the week and we'll just buy a lunch roll.
Make sure that all four are here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good idea.
You know, pick a day when Charlene's got Dr. Spur.
Alright. Alright, I'll take that under advisement. And I know where I'll probably go. My new best place in Henderson is, is John Earls. Down on, on Martin Luther King.
Oh, yeah.
I'm telling you, they are, those ladies in there are first class. Well, I'm just a burger guy. You know, I'm like Farrell's.
I heard they had good burgers.
I'm like Farrell's and I put him up there with Farrell's and B and H. B and H still being my favorite, but. Yeah. B and H is my favorite, but theirs is, theirs is extremely good. And that's all I've eaten there. So I know they got pork tenderloin. They got all kinds of stuff for their french fries. Alright, I'm going to shut up.
Most of you are good.
And thank you, Nathan.
I'll second.
And second by Karen, all in favor, second by by saying aye. Opposed? Again, thanks to our IT man. Hopefully everybody got sound. That was my biggest worry. Did we, everybody get, uh, was there any questions or do you see anything? Alright, good.
Chris, give us some.
I guess what, Charlene? I didn't turn it on. So you're going to have to really count on this program here. It's recording right now. Yeah, it'd be alright.
You'll just have to watch it tomorrow and dictate from it.
Yeah.
I see you can play it back tomorrow during work hours and record it from that. You know what I mean? You can let it play in the background while you're working and then record it.
Yeah.
Robert, thank you. We'll, uh, I'll, Charlene to contact you because I don't know.
Alex, it was nice meeting you.
Nice being you.
I don't know if there's any information we have to give to you guys.
Karen.